Two, three, or something.
You're testing one, two, three.
I can't see there. That might open the door.
Let you know the square has, okay. I think Mark is up to get down.
But Danielle. Ask her about. City clerk. No, she's city clerk.
City clerk.
He only had two sips. Well, she didn't need to, she got to, she thought she was zoomed out.
Oh, that's okay.
And the General Assembly of the shot, they factors.
For a minute there, I wasn't sure which meeting I was signing on to. I was worried for a moment I might be seeing all of you from two months ago.
Where am I? Can't hear you. I know.
Welcome everyone to our March eighth Town Council meeting. Our pledge of allegiance.
This is to the flag of the United States.
United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, divisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you all. Again, this is a virtual meeting, so those of you who are mic on to quick to raise your hand if you're calling in on your phone. Star nine will indicate if you have a question. Star six will mute unmute your phone. For anybody who is called upon, please state your name and address for the town clerk. Our role.
President. Present.
Budmeyer.
Here.
Hamilton.
I am here.
Here.
Dr. Ryan.
Here.
Thank you.
Here. Thank you all. I do not have a president's executive summary. Our next item. Proclamation, first proclamation. Service on the zoning board. Proclamation of appreciation, Town Council, on behalf of the citizens of Town Council, wishes and our thanks and appreciation at home for for the years of dedicated public service to the Town Council. President Catherine served as a member of the zoning board from September fourteenth, two thousand fifteen, March fourteen, thousand twenty-one. And whereas Kathleen was a top of the intelligence zoning board member, who was very well prepared for each petition. Whereas Kathleen believes that zoning is a perfect plan, preservation of all important aspects of the town's function and progress. Therefore, we have proclaimed Town Council, which for itself, on behalf of all the citizens of the community, Kathleen Pop. Education and improvement in public service, Town Council. For this proclamation to be presented each day of March, two thousand. We're doing this virtually. Kathleen will be here. We have a pile for her, so we'll make sure that Kathleen receives her report file. Thank you for your service, Kathleen.
Mr. President, you're breaking up a bit. And I'm not sure why.
Nerves.
I don't think AV systems have nerves.
All right, next. Bear with me on the next one, a little bit longer, proclamation. It's the Meals on Wheels proclamation. Okay, proclamation proclaiming March twenty twenty-one as the nineteenth annual March for Meals Month. Whereas on March twenty-second, nineteen seventy-two, President Richard Nixon signed into law a measure that amended the older American Act nineteen sixty-five and established a national nutrition program for seniors sixty years and older. Whereas Meals on Wheels America established March for Meals campaign in March two thousand and two. Recognize the historic month, the importance of the American Act Nutrition Program. Both for private and home delivery and raise awareness about the escalating problem of senior hunger in America. And whereas the two thousand twenty-one observance of March for Meals celebrates nineteen years of providing an opportunity to support Meals on Wheels programs that deliver vital and critical services by donating, volunteering, and raising awareness about senior hunger and isolation. And whereas Meals on Wheels nutrition programs have served Rhode Island communities habitually for fifty-two years, serving two thousand seven hundred and forty-eight homebound Rhode Islanders and delivering three hundred thirty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight home-delivered meals in two thousand and twenty. And whereas volunteers for Meals on Wheels of Rhode Island are the backbone of a program and they not only deliver nutritious meals to seniors and individuals with disabilities who are at a significant risk of hunger and isolation, but also caring concern and attention to their welfare. And whereas Meals on Wheels of Rhode Island programs provide nutritious meals to seniors throughout the state that help them maintain their health and independence, thereby preventing unnecessary falls, hospitalizations, and/or premature institutionalization. And whereas Meals on Wheels of Rhode Island programs provide a powerful opportunity for social connection for millions of seniors to help combat negative health effects and economic consequences of loneliness and isolation. And whereas Meals on Wheels of Rhode Island programs deserve recognition for their role, contributions, and essential services that they have provided amid COVID-19 pandemic and will continue to provide to local communities, our state and our nation long after it's over. Now therefore, I, Kevin M. Agar, as President and enforcement Town Council, hereby proclaim March twenty twenty-one as the nineteenth annual March for Meals Month and urge every citizen to take this month to honor our Meals on Wheels programs, seniors they serve, and volunteers who care for them. Our recognition of an involvement in national twenty twenty-one March for Meals can enrich our entire community and help combat senior hunger and isolation in America. It is eighth day of March, twenty twenty-one. And I would just like to say that on going along with this proclamation, Congressman Hamilton and myself have been invited to deliver a meal this Friday, March twelfth, so we will be participating in the program, so we're looking forward to that. If we're right. Okay. Second year to re-group. Next, we have our consent agenda. Move the consent agenda. We'll receive a place on final.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Seconded.
All those in favor.
Mrs. Jufusa.
Aye.
Abbott.
Aye.
Budmeyer.
Aye.
Hamilton.
Aye.
Aye.
Dr. Ryan.
Aye.
Craig.
Aye. Passes seven to zero. We have our minutes from February twenty-second.
Move to approve. Seconded.
All those in favor.
Mrs. Jufusa.
Aye.
Is Abbott.
Aye.
Budmeyer.
Aye.
Hamilton.
Aye.
Ellie.
Aye.
Dr. Ryan.
Aye.
Craig.
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Next, it's tax voucher, just request for tax voucher, twenty twenty-one.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Mrs. Jufusa.
Aye.
Abbott.
Aye.
Budmeyer.
Aye.
Hamilton.
Aye.
Ellie.
Aye.
Dr. Ryan.
Aye.
Craig.
Aye. Motion passes. We have our gentleman district.
Thank you, Mr. President. Town Council days, gentlemen. Happy International Women's Day. I hope everyone is doing well. In fact, to COVID-19 and regular update, Rhode Island's COVID-19 positivity rate continues to remain low at two point one percent for the last week. Additionally, over a quarter million vaccinations have been administered statewide. Locally, we are in our fourth week of administering vaccines to worship residents seventy-five and older. Started administering second doses to that population starting next week. Additionally, Governor Key and the Rhode Island Department of Health have directed that all teachers and school personnel have the opportunity to get vaccinations by the end of March. So in that vein, we are working with the state, Rhode Island EMA, and the school administration to open our vaccination center to teachers as possible. State-run vaccination center planned to open at the site of the former Bennys on West Main Road will open in the next two weeks, and that site will take responsibility for vaccinations of the remaining population. Direction on how to register for vaccinations at the state-run sites, the regional centers, and local pharmacies are available online via the Rhode Island Department of Health and E-Town's websites. Predator virus, in particularly its variants of this virus, do remain a concern. T and Rhode Island Department of Health are encouraging everyone to get tested regularly. The rapid and PCR testing appointments are available at various locations throughout the state, and you can get those appointments at the portal dot ri dot gov website. Beginning this past weekend, capacity limits in restaurants have increased from fifty percent to sixty-six percent, and gyms and fitness centers can increase capacity from one person for one hundred and twenty-five square feet to one person for one hundred square feet. But everyone is cautioned to please continue to wear masks, limit large gatherings, and maintain social distance. Back to the budget, the budget process is slightly ahead of the schedule that was approved by the council last December. That budget proposal has been received, reviewed, and challenged, and the school administration will present their second draft of their budget proposal to the school committee tomorrow evening. There does remain more work to do, and as a note, we are forced to make some assumptions while awaiting a state budget proposal. However, we are on track to submit a budget proposal for Town Council's review at the end of March. Back to my report, Mr. President.
Mr. President, I just want to thank the staff for working twenty-four seven during the COVID crisis to deal with ever-changing state vaccination requests and the budget simultaneously. I really think that they've been doing such an outstanding job trying to juggle these things, so thank you.
Moving on to reservations and appointments. First, it's Economic Development Committee.
Move to approve Ted Pice to the Economic Development Committee.
Seconded.
All those in favor.
Mrs. Jufusa.
Aye.
Abbott.
Aye.
Budmeyer.
Aye.
Hamilton.
Aye.
Ellie.
Aye.
Dr. Ryan.
Aye.
Craig.
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. And next, we have reappointments to the Texas Southern Board of Review for Norbert Rattay and Brad Finnegan.
Move to approve both the reappointment of both Mr. Rattay and Mr. Finnegan.
Seconded.
All those in favor.
Mrs. Jufusa.
Aye.
Abbott.
Aye.
Budmeyer.
Aye.
Hamilton.
Aye.
Ellie.
Aye.
Dr. Ryan.
Problem with the mute. Aye.
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
As a scheduling conflict is asking to move.
Okay. So. I need a.
We're going to the basketball courts first.
The first item under new business is propose basketball courts at the Seventy Field Conference.
Mr. Swider is here, I believe. We just gotta promote him up here.
Right into the ranks.
Hey, everybody.
There he is.
There we go. Good evening, Swider. Can you hear us?
Yes, Jeff Swider, sixty-eight Holman Street. Thank you for having me. What we have in front of you today is a proposal to possibly construct outdoor basketball courts at Seventy Fields. If you are familiar with the town of Portsmouth, you know there are a few dilapidated courts throughout the town that are really not suitable for use by our children. Became really apparent during COVID that outdoor basketball was a tough thing to come by, and we had kids going to Middletown in Newport and using the courts that were at the high school. So when we started exploring this, we looked at, we spoke to the school department. We were told that the courts that are at the high school were not available for renovation. They've been used for parking. We looked at the Elmhurst Courts and determined that having any amount of people down there would probably disrupt the neighborhood. So in speaking with Keith Hamilton, he identified an area, and if you go to page two, I think you could see it, down at the Glen, right near the recreation department, subsequently the Brown House. I've spoken to Wendy Bulk and Brian Woodhead, reviewed the area with them. You can see the Brown House. I don't know if you can see my cursor, but the Brown House is obviously right next to the baseball field, and there's an area right above the parking lot that is pitched kind of strong for uses as outdoor field. It is used for little scoopers and sometimes some soccer and other overflow events, but it's not the best field. So we would propose having site work done there, consulting with an engineer to figure out what drainage is necessary, and look at possibly three to five basketball courts in that space. Portsmouth Youth Basketball would raise the money necessary to construct this and to maintain it. We would ask for a ten-year low-dollar lease to give us the ability to take care of that, and we would look to partner with the recreation department to make unused time available for the town for leagues and anything the recreation department wanted to do. Portsmouth Youth Basketball would, of course, like to arrange some clinics and leagues there, but our biggest goal is to make the courts available for use for pickup basketball by the children of the town. I think that there's so many kids doing sports there all day. It'd be great if they could run down when maybe their sibling is playing soccer or lacrosse and get some shots up and play. It's a very accessible space. We're all aware that people are driving around there at all times. Police are very present. There aren't any neighbors that could be disturbed by any noise or lights. So as Keith identified, it's a great spot. We completely agree. If you go to the next page, you can take a look at what we think is necessary to do. So we would look to have site work plans developed, either partnering with a town engineer or hiring our own, whatever we're directed to do. We receive multiple bids for each phase of the court construction. We develop fundraising strategies for families and corporate donors, and we would investigate grants from both government programs and foundations, and then work with the recreation department in the town to develop use guidelines and time sharing. And finally, on the following page, I think everyone would agree that additional outdoor recreational space for our youth is super important, especially given what we've just been through. We do believe it would upgrade Seventy Fields, and courts have a long life cycle with minimal maintenance, but we would look to establish most likely a partnership with the rec department to make it available for outside use with a rental fee to help with the maintenance. So I don't want to take up too much of your time, but that is an overview of it. We realize there's a lot of work to be done, and I'd like to get the town council's approval to move forward with this. Or answer any questions, obviously, that I'm sure will come up.
Quiet. Councilors, questions?
Our mute button.
Okay, I've got this. Yeah, I just have some questions. You are a private nonprofit, is that right, Mr. Swider?
We are. Yep, Portsmouth Youth Basketball. We were founded in two thousand and seven. We've probably had a few thousand kids go through our program, on average, four hundred kids a year since two thousand and seven. We've given back one hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus to the school department with in-kind donations such as benches and chairs, and I think you can see that a lot of our good work has gone to a couple of state championships in a row for.
Right, congratulations. Joe Ochi, yes, yay. Right. And so you're a five oh one C three?
We are.
Okay, and I'm just wondering exactly what is it that you would be looking for from the town right now?
Well, permission to use the space and to further explore and work with Rich Ranier to figure out, you know, how would we deal with, from an engineering and insurance, as well as Mr. Woodhead to look at developing that space. So, you know, obviously, we don't own the space. The town does, and they would need to give us permission to develop it there.
Right. I think in the past, correct me if I'm wrong, my fellow counselors, that when there's been a proposal like this, we'd like to see some sort of MOU so that we understand exactly what we're agreeing to and what your proposal is. So something in writing. Could I ask that perhaps we table this discussion until that MOU draft can get prepared, and then we're able to understand the details more?
Sure. I mean, I guess I need to understand what it is you require and also figure, you know, in order for us to figure out what the full cost would be and present a real proposal, I guess we need to kind of get incremental approvals. So is there any reason why we can't get an engineering plan done and figure out the, you know, come up with a a concrete plan of how this should be used? Or I guess, help me understand what the process would be.
Right. I don't want to I don't want to make you think that this initial approval by the town council or an initial approval by the town council is locking us into taking further steps. And so I just want to make sure that we have a clear understanding of what the town and the and your organization's relationship is, and it's a little bit, I mean, I understand, I played center on my high school basketball team, so I get the game, but it just, and I love it, but I just want to make sure that the town and a private five oh one C three has a clearly defined relationship. And I'm not sure what taking this whole step does. Maybe our town solicitor can help me out with how these have been done in the past, or folks with more experience who've seen, who have suggestions.
May I, Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Hamilton.
I think to Mr. Jufusa's point, before shovels go in the ground, we need to have a firm MOU between the recreation department, the town, and Portsmouth Youth Basketball, and also just to bring back the engineering plan so we can see exactly what, you know, the concept finally looks like on paper, what kind of work has to go into it. I think what the basketball association is looking for now is just approval in concept to go forward to develop those plans and bring back the MOU that can be worked out between the town solicitor and Mr. Rayner and Portsmouth Youth Basketball, and then at a later date, whether it be June or July, come back and present a final proposal. Does that sound what you're looking at, Mr. Jufusa?
I guess so. I just, I just don't want, like, you know, in a few months from now for us to, because we are in the process, we're going to be doing the open space and recreation master plan, and I'm not, you know, in a perfect world, that would be done, and then we could see how everything fits together, but that's not done yet. And so I'm a little wary about locking us into things when we haven't gotten our overarching plan done. And also, I don't want to put Mr. Swider in the position of having spent a lot of money on something where, you know, something comes up and then we have to say, oh, that place isn't available. So if you're comfortable, or if people are comfortable saying he can certainly do the initial studies with the understanding that something might come up, you know, I guess that's what I worry about.
I'd like to make comments before we.
Sure.
Sorry, I apologize. I'm going on a tangent a little bit, but first of all, I, this is a fantastic idea. We absolutely should have outdoor basketball courts. I think the location is perfect. Our kids a hundred percent need it, but like, if we're not all here sitting and feeling totally deflated and ashamed of ourselves, then there's something wrong with us. Because what I see here is a town that, one, has dilapidated basketball courts all over the place that we haven't taken care of and are not suitable for use, and now, two, we have parents that are going to have to fundraise privately to build basketball courts so that our kids can play basketball, which I find shameful. For a town of our caliber with our quality of life, with the real estate values that we have around here, it's absolutely ridiculous that we don't have outdoor basketball courts for our kids to play. And that in order to get it, we have to have a bunch of parents fundraise for it. The town should pay for the engineering pa, plans, the town should build basketball courts, and it should be expected in a town like Portsmouth or Rhode Island that we have park facilities for our children to play basketball. Now, I'll say another thing, you're, um, I disagree with the comment about disrupting neighborhoods. We don't have anywhere for our kids to play basketball, so you know what happens? There's like eight basketball hoops on the street in my neighborhood, on people's driveways, because the kids don't have anywhere they can go play basketball together. So instead of having a nice park facility where kids can have pickup leagues and play basketball, and heck, even my husband can go play adult basketball if he wants in the summer, no. We have to play in our driveways and we have to listen to eight different, uh, you know, groups of kids playing basketball in our street. So I love the idea, we a hundred percent should do it. I think we've started to acknowledge our faults and our, the lack of facilities for recreation in this town. And we're trying to ad, address it with our master plan. Unfortunately, that's a really, really slow process, so, um, you know, in, in lieu of that, I think, you know, there's no way I can say I don't agree with this, because we need it. And everything, um, that we are trying to do just takes too long. And we're, you know, decades behind on having the recreational facilities that we need. So thank you for bringing it, this to our attention, I think it's very much needed. And I hope that, um, you know, this can help motivate us as a town to be more supportive of our, of improving our recreational facilities across the board. Because it's not just basketball, it's for, you know, a lot of other, a lot of other things. So, um, I just wanted to say that as, uh, as we're sitting here, because a lot of these guys have heard me say these things before. But, Mr. Swider, thank you for coming, and I think, um, what you outlined makes, makes sense, so that's it, thank you.
Mrs. Giuffus, to, to your point about that, I'm sorry, but to your point about the overall arching recreation open space plan, once that company is selected, we can just let them know that this is in process and they can incorporate it into their plan. I think it's the easiest way to go about that.
Okay, and, and that, that isn't my major, I, I just don't want anybody to be disappointed, you know, because of some sudden thing that happens. Um, but if you feel that it's okay to, um, let Mr. Swider take the next steps. Again, I agree with, uh, Council Abbott, we definitely need better, um, parks and recreation facilities. Um, and if, if Mr. Swider, and, and when I talk to other towns, it appears that most of them have, uh, private interests driving a lot of their, uh, their community, um, facilities, renovations and construction. So it, it is an unfortunate situation that that's, that we are limited to our, uh, property taxes to fund some of these, uh, really important projects. But, um, yes, thank you, Mr. Swider, and I would support allowing, um, him to proceed as long as we are not, in, in some unforeseen way, making the town commit to a legal situation that we shouldn't commit to at this moment. So I know that's very broad, but I don't know, I don't know how these things usually go forward.
I'm going to disagree with one thing that you said, Linda, I think, uh, towns and municipalities often have to rely on grants and, you know, outside sources of income to get.
Sure, no, I, that's what I mean.
They still retain ownership and are responsible for maintenance and upkeep of their recreational facilities. Um, so I, whatever, however we work together to get these built, I do think it is in the town's interest to own, manage and operate them with an agreement that PYB can use it to run their leagues.
That seems fair, well, I mean, I guess if, if I had permission to work with, uh, Mr. Ranier, Mr. Woodhead and, and Mrs. Bulk to pursue this and come up with a lot of momentum, there's obviously a lot of work to do, we have, need to have plans done. Uh, and I think we could do that in good faith. At the end of the day, we want the kids to have a place to play outdoors, whether that's the town building or us building it. You know, there's a lot of generous people in this town who have donated money for all sorts of things you wouldn't think that citizens would donate money for. I, I, I'm happy to do the work, because I really just want to see kids play basketball outside, that's the main goal.
One question actually, um, Mr. Rayner, does the volleyball course that we just built at Glen Park, they don't have a lease with the town, right? They, they have an agreement with the town where they built it, but it's still town-owned and maintained, right?
As a league, they could first write, uh, for lack of a better description, first write a proposal, because when the rec desk opens up, all the leagues, uh, can schedule their, their play. And then outside of those scheduled periods, uh, anybody can reserve.
Okay, sorry, you were muted there at the beginning, but they don't have like a long-term lease or anything?
Oh, they do not.
Okay, but that, that kind of a agreement makes sense.
Motion to approve, uh, Mr. Swider's request to work with our staff to develop an MOU.
And begin the, um, engineering process, which I think it makes most sense to come back with the MOU and the engineering plans, where we could do it all at once and look and say, yes, this makes sense.
All right.
Yes, Abbott, did you second that?
I did, yes.
Okay, thank you, I stepped over you, I apologize for that.
We have a, we have a motion in a second, uh, to advance the MOU development plans for basketball courts at the company complex.
Hi.
Ms. Abbott?
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Motion passes seven to zero, thank you, Swider.
Thank you, Jeff, good luck.
Thank you, have a good night.
Uh, councilors, um, new business number two, uh, our auditor is, uh, running a little bit late and is asked to be pushed to the end of the agenda, so we have a, a motion to break here and shift it down to the, uh, end of the agenda.
Uh, move to, uh, move the second item of new business, uh, to the, the end of the new business section.
Second. Hi.
Abbott?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Motion passes seven to zero, okay. All right, new business is number three, uh, alternative support of locations for senior center activity. Like, everybody getting that?
Yes, very, very.
When, uh, when the agenda became available, um, we received a letter, uh, from the, from the, chairman of the Portsmouth Multi-Purpose Senior Center, basically, uh, acknowledging these two proposals. But the, the senior center, uh, has basically, uh, they are not willing to, they are not able, or not going to pursue these proposals at this time. Uh, so really, there's, there's no point in hearing, uh, this, these two agenda items, or this agenda item tonight. Uh, so I would ask that we table this until. Table.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes, would you please?
Uh, before I, I'd like to just comment on this, I believe this is a start, though I'd like to thank, um, Ms. Zanny from Common Fence Point for making, um, this offer of help. And I, I just believe that this is the start of a really important, um, and inspiring conversation, frankly. It's like the children's story, Stone Soup, you know, there, there's so many people and organizations in our town are stepping forward with offers to help. And we are stronger as a community, um, when we see all the contributions coming, um, to help our seniors. And I just want to give a shout out, not just to CFPA, but also, um, to our public library, our local churches, the VFW Hall, Historical Society, Portsmouth Arts Guild, so many people who have said that they are very much, um, open to helping our seniors. And, um, they would be happy to do more. And I will vote in favor of tabling, but only with the understanding that the council will be able to consider, um, as we delve deeper into the budget process and civic support requests, all the options for providing Portsmouth seniors with services and facilities that will preserve and expand their activities and the camaraderie they have built through the senior center, as well as keep our seniors happy and safe. So thank you very much, I vote aye.
I, I do, uh, I do apologize for not recognizing that it was the Common Fence Point Improvement Association as well, as well from our rec department that did put together, um, but, uh, like, as I mentioned, um, our, uh, belt, uh, soup, their, their needs at this time, so.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, I don't know if it's just me, but I can barely hear you.
My microphone is six inches away from me, I don't.
That's better. That was clear.
All right, so maybe, uh, maybe I'll start over. Again, I, I do apologize for not acknowledging the Common Fence Point Improvement Association as well as Mr. Paul, you know, put the, put the information for us tonight. Uh, but as I mentioned, the, uh, senior center, the board of the senior center, or the director of the senior center, uh, felt that the proposals did not meet their needs, um, and, and were opposed to the options. So there's really no sense in, in us discussing them at this point tonight. As Mr. Giuffus said, um, we could reconsider these, uh, down the road as we, you know, get into some, some more of the process and things of that nature. So we, we had a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Yes, would you please?
Aye.
Abbott?
Aye.
Scott Ryan?
Hi.
Council?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Aguirre?
Hi, motion passes seven to zero. Our next item is a request to allow Friends of the Senior Center and the Senior Center to make necessary repairs to resolve fire code violations. Are you, are you with it?
Hi, I just had to unmute.
Okay, um, just before you begin, I, I would like to just, um, mention, I, I know that there was some, uh, some activity today and there was some correspondence, um, with the director of the senior center about the possibility of, of the fire marshal and, and our fire chief, um, look at senior center with respect to, uh, or keeping it partially open. It's, it's my understanding that they, they are working on the framework, um, of a solution that, that would, uh, allow the continued use of the office, thrift shop, the library, game room, and crafts room, and craft room. Um, but those would be subject to certain conditions, uh, based on, um, a, a, a little bit more of a thorough review and evaluating, uh, the use of the building. The, the remaining portions of the building would not be, um, sent to the senior center, uh, until repairs and such, until such time as the repairs that were identified in their deficiency, uh, letter had been addressed. But that, this is kind of late information, it's, uh, come in today and is being worked on. So I, I did want you to know that, um, that we have been in touch with, uh, with the director about this process and that the, uh, additional discussion will.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Aguirre, um, you said, was this the, um, town fire marshal and the town fire chief?
It was the state fire marshal and the, and there was the, was the town fire marshal and the fire chief, with coordination from, who received coordination from the city department. Did you hear that, Ms. Fireman?
Say you asked, state. You, you did say, you said that it was the town fire chief and the town fire marshal with coordination with the state fire marshal?
Correct.
Okay, right, um, is the town preparing, um, an amended, uh, plan of action to submit to the state fire marshal? Because it's my, it's my understanding there is a state fire marshal decision, um, and in order to reverse that decision, the town cannot reverse that decision unless they submit a new plan of action to the state fire marshal, Board of Appeal, is that, is that what the town is planning on doing?
The building as a place of assembly cannot be reversed. What the town is working on now is can the use of the north end rooms that were just read out by the council president, can those still be used, um, with conditions placed on them with regard to, uh, occupancy size? Uh, if measures are put in place that would prohibit the use of the south side rooms, particularly the kitchen, uh, the dining area, and the place where people eat and have meals. I have to coordinate with the state fire marshal. And, uh, as Mr. Aguirre has stated, uh, the inspection was done today and there'll be more information to follow once the fire chief has had a chance to, uh, present his findings to the state fire marshal and agree on what those conditions are for the continued use of the buildings, or the rooms mentioned.
And if I heard correctly, you said that you are going to change, um, the usage of the building and taking away the assembly?
The building will no longer be able to, the building cannot be used as a place of assembly. Uh, the reason for that is because the building, uh, as designed and then, uh, based on its square footage, has an occupancy limit of greater than five hundred.
Right.
That's, and the, the, uh, corrective measures that need to be put into place to allow that to continue are based on its use as a place of assembly.
Right, the sprinkler, you're, you're speaking of the sprinkler.
The sprinkler and there's some, uh, two other measures that need to be taken, uh, put in place. However, uh, the use of those rooms that were mentioned, the office, the, the thrift shop, the library, the craft room, there may be an avenue forward where those rooms could continue to be used, uh, with, uh, particular attention paid to the occupancy. And again, that's, that's to be determined, uh, hopefully this week.
Thank you, um, for your clarification, I'll just, um, sort of proceed with, um, what, what the intent is of our group and, um, and how we move forward, um, from here. Um, the Friends of the Portsmouth Senior Center is a five oh C three nonprofit organization, which was made up of concerned citizens, members of the community wanting to assist the senior center in a goal of making the necessary repairs to the Anne Hutchinson School in order to allow them to continue, remain at the Anne Hutchinson School and continue the entire scope of the senior center functions at the Anne Hutchinson School during the pendency of the church community housing proposal phase, which was previously discussed at the February eighth town council meeting. Um, it was indicated at that meeting that this proposal phase by church community may take up to five years. At the same meeting, the director of the church community, Chris Beldon, did state that he did not have a problem with the senior center remaining at the location while the church community was conducting their, um, proposal phase. It's important to note that the senior center board and membership address many of the safety concerns that were initially identified, but the primary one that needs to be addressed to allow them to stay, as you said, to, uh, obtain the occupancy certificate, is the print, is the sprinkler system. There's also been some attention drawn to the Jacobs report in several of, uh, the most recent, um, town council, um, meetings. Um, the Jacobs report identi, identified several buildings throughout the town, and the Anne Hutchinson School was not one of them, that they indicated that was in such disrepair that needed to, um, have special attention to it. There were other buildings in much worse condition, um. But however, the last town council meeting, the town administrator, Rayner, noted the potential problems with the Jacobs report and that he would book for additional, um, R. RFPs, I think was stated. This demonstrated a willingness, you know, to the community, there is a willingness to seek accurate renovation costs for the Anne Hutchinson School. Throughout all this, all this process and media attention surrounding the senior center, there's been tremendous community support for the senior center to remain at the Anne Hutchinson School, as evidenced by the number of petitions that were signed and submitted with our group's proposal to get on tonight's agenda. This number of petitions has only grown since we submitted our proposal and the community willingness has stepped up and many have indicated their willingness to help the senior center in maintaining their continuity in their operations at the Anne Hutchinson School. With all the support, we have gone to identify possible funding sources to help the senior center in their efforts to make the repairs needed to remain at the Anne Hutchinson School. In our, in our efforts to find solutions to assist the senior center make these repairs, primarily the sprinkler system, we have discovered pursuant to the center's lease with the town, the center is allowed to make these repairs on their own if the town opts not to do so. However, this is problematic due to representations made by town officials during the February 18th, 2020 State Fire Safety Code Board of Appeal and Review. Town officials presented oral testimony during this hearing that the Anne Hutchinson School will be vacated as of July 1st, 2021 and ultimately demolished. At no time had the senior center leadership been aware of the town's representations to the fire board. These representations were made well over a year ago before the senior center leadership found out about the town indicating to them that they were going to need to vacate the building as of June 30th, 2021. As stated by Helen Matthew, the director, chairperson of the senior center board, in her memo to council outlining the services provided, the senior center operations appreciates all the opportunities that the community and other, and other offers that have been made, such as Common Fence Point and the Brown House, their willingness to help them. However, as she indicated in her memo, these are simply not feasible. They need one location to conduct all their functions. During the February 8th, 2021 Town Council meeting, in which the MOU was signed with church community, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought because you took away some of my speaking points. You know, there were these other suggestions about going to Middletown and then now the Brown House. But as indicated by Helen Matthew in her memo, in her memo, it's just not feasible. And there's also safety concerns of the traffic flow on East Main and West Main Road for the seniors to travel to and from. The Anne Hutchinson School is located on Bristol Ferry Road. The traffic flow on that street is moderate. There's, parking lot is plenty of space and the facility accommodates all of their needs. In summary, the senior center leadership support, supports our efforts. The Anne Hutchinson School has a capacity for everyone at one location, minimize transportation issues, continuity of services for the seniors. And furthermore, our solution benefits the town as well. If you were to ask the seniors to vacate the Anne Hutchinson School on June 30th, you are potentially left with another vacant building that could deteriorate for potentially over the course of five years while church community works through their proposal plan. The senior center will celebrate their 40th anniversary this summer and our hope is that the council is as concerned about the seniors as they appear to be about recreation facilities in the town. And, and as Councilwoman Linda Uchifuma mentioned, we are strong, we are a strong community and we hope that the council is in agreement and allow us, our organization, to raise funds with efforts of the senior center to make the necessary repair, primarily the sprinkler system, to allow them to remain there, obtain the occupancy certificate, allow them to remain there past the June 30th deadline and while church community is working through their proposal process. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Rayner would like to provide a comment and I would like to follow up after Mr. Rayner.
It's like clear to the air. And thank you, Ms. Martin, for your comments. I think we're spot on. But just to clear the air, you referenced a lot of the media attention that's been brought to this. Yep, sure, yes. Let me just state that the purpose of the fire appeal board hearing was to discuss the town's plan to address fire code issues identified in the state fire marshal reports. We had to present a plan to correct some issues and obtain relief on others. We went into the hearing with a full understanding that the board could have ordered the town to immediately correct all issues that were identified in that report. The effect of that possibility would have been an immediate closure of the building. We knew we did not have the funds to renovate the building to allow continued use for congregant first purposes. The town has tried to mitigate this in the past by limiting occupancy, but that doesn't work. The size of the building and its square footage dictates occupancy limits and that number is greater than 500. So, we went into the hearing hoping that the board would accept our plan and grant us relief for a period of time, which would allow alternate plans to be considered and pursued by all stakeholders. So, we had to, one, approach this issue from a how long should, if I say how could, the building remain open as a senior center, while, two, balancing the safety of life concerns and financial practicalities we face. Based on the fire chief's assessment of the business, he asked for the July 1st, 2021 date. At that time, we had no other planned purpose for the building. Hence, the reason I stated it was our intent to close and vacate the building. I was referring to its use as a place of assembly. Additionally, during this timeframe, there was and continues to be development concept plans for a multi-purpose community center. I was directed to pursue this by the Town Council. Preliminary work done by Compass Group Architecture focused on two identified sites, the site of the current Anne Hutchinson Building and the site of the closed Cogshaw School. Initial review determined that the Cogshaw School site would not be large enough to encompass parking that lot and an integrated senior center. That left either the Anne Hutchinson site or a site to be determined later. The consultant felt that if the town pursued plans based on their preliminary work, the Anne Hutchinson site presented the best and most cost-effective solution, which incorporated a new senior center. This is what was on my mind when I was at that board and I stated that the long-term plan was to demolish the building. Of course, I understand that any actions taken along these lines would require Town Council approval and I trust the council knows this. From today's perspective, I don't know what the actual plan would be as we move forward and I hope that we move forward together. Regardless, the Fire Safety Code Board of Appeals did and did not and does not consider what future plans are for any building under review. They were and are only concerned with safety of life as an occupant. And my statement says that oral testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Rayner. So, I'd like to circle back to the agenda item, which is the, you know, the Friends of the Portsmouth Senior Center request that is before us. Ms. Martin, I do support the concept of what you're trying to do. Similar to what you heard earlier tonight, if you were on, when we were talking about the basketball courts, we would be looking for an MOU from Friends of the Portsmouth Senior Center that further defined your proposal and what specifically would be, you know, addressed at the senior center. You know, there was a list of violations. The town has taken care of many of those violations, but there are still a couple of the big ones and I think you, you know, commonly refer to it as the sprinklers. The sprinkler is a big, is a big item, but the building needs to be brought up into compliance, you know, for a place of assembly. And so, there might be some additional costs in there that are beyond just the sprinklers when you get into renovating a building and bringing it up to code. So, I just want to, you know, I think if this were to move forward, I think we would, as a council, want to have an MOU with the Friends of the Portsmouth Senior Center that it fully details the expectations, schedule, responsibilities. That way, I think we're all, you know, eliminating any gray areas about ownership or responsible parties with some of these repairs and what, what the level of effort is actually going to be in order to reopen portions of that building to be considered a place of assembly. You know, I think we made all progress today with the potential for allowing the front half of the building to remain open with some restrictions and we'll wait to see what those are. But I would feel more comfortable with a detailed MOU that defined our roles and responsibilities for both parties. I'll open it up at this point to other councils.
Mr. President, I agree. I think we've taken the same position with other folks who wanted to work on the Cogshaw School. And I would, I would make a motion to ask for an MOU in this situation as well.
Second for discussion. I don't know if I heard you correctly there, Mr. President. I think you said two parties. It should be three parties involved because you have the town, the Friends, and also the senior center themselves.
Correct. It will be, I believe there'd be at least those three parties in the MOU. Thank you, Joe.
As President Agar stated, there are other, other items that need to be addressed. I think hopefully the work that started today allows the senior center management and a smaller group of individuals to be able to maintain an office in the building and some of the smaller activities. Obviously, we can't have dances and large lunches and dinners there. And I think throughout the past couple of months, we've seen other options, including the Common Fence Point Improvement Association's offer to be able to allow it to be used for lunch and for Zumba classes and all the other activities that happen at the senior center. I think those can happen in conjunction with each other. I don't necessarily think that the building has to be in the same location for somebody to be able to host a Zumba class. We need to have a good, firm understanding of what is going to be fixed and how it's going to be fixed. There's a lot of laws that the town has to follow, including the Davis Bacon Act, prevailing wage laws and things like that. So, the memorandum of understanding between the town, the senior center, and the Friends of the senior center needs to be pretty well ironed out before we can go forward with anything. But I do appreciate the public support. It's nice to see it come together and I hope that we can move this ball forward as quickly as possible.
There is one hand up. Who is it? It's Ms. Martin. Okay.
Yeah. Thank you. We can certainly get that to you.
Okay. So, at this point, should we, as a council, table this until the Friends of the Senior Center come back with a, the next step, which would be an MOU for us to review and weigh in on? Oh, Ms. Gavin? I've overstepped my bounds, I think.
Yes, we're coming back with it. The Friends of Portsmouth Senior Center in conjunction with the senior center. We'll come back with that. We can have it ready in time for the next council meeting.
Well, let's, let me hear from our solicitors. I may have...
If I rose, raised my hand, that was inadvertent. Sorry.
All right. I'm feeling better. Okay. So, are there, so there's two hands up. One was Ms. Gavin by accident, the other one is Ms. Martin?
Yeah. I mean, I mean, at this point, I don't really want to weigh any of the merits of what we're trying to do until we actually have an MOU. So, I will ask, I don't believe...
Kate Thomas. Is Miss Thomas there?
Hi.
At this point, we're really not going to open this up to public opinion or comment until we actually get to the next level, which would be the MOU. And then we can hear from, you know, the public as well. I know that there will be opportunities down the road for, for support. At this, at tonight, we're not really able to make a decision. So, we're, that's why we're going to table this until they come back. So, I really would, I would ask if you could hold off until our, until the next meeting that this is on.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. President, I don't know if I made a motion correctly, but I withdraw whatever the old motion was and I'll just make a motion to, as you suggested, table this until we are presented with an MOU.
Agreed.
Okay. All those in favor?
Ms. Guza?
Aye.
Gavin?
Aye. Hi. Hi. Can you hear me?
I was looking for Mr. Gordon Martin.
Sorry, I didn't hear my name. Aye.
Gray Allison?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed and settled. Thank you, Ms. Martin. Martin will wait for me.
Thank you.
Okay. I've got a, I've had a lot of people. Next item on our agenda is the Nelville Park Committee Bylaw Amendment.
Mr. President, before we slide on real quick, the senior center director just raised her hand. I don't know if you want to entertain that real quick before we move on to Mr. Lucy? Steve, I forget how to say your last name. It's Loose.
All right. So, so we have a, I will go back to the, to the director of the senior center?
Oh, that was an accident. I'm so sorry.
You and Kevin are hanging out together, huh?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Gavin?
All right. Okay. So, on to Nelville Park Committee Bylaw. Is he there?
If you are in attendance, please raise your hand, please.
I don't think he's here. I don't know if everybody else has read through. It's just a couple of minor changes on the bylaws. We're looking at changing the dates of the meeting from the second Wednesday to the first Wednesday. They're all in their bylaws that they're going to record all their meetings and all items be put forward by the committee members or placed on the next available agenda.
Yeah. These are, I was there when they debated and these are all procedural things that are very reasonable. I would move that we approve their, their changes. I, I would move that we approve their, their changes.
I would second that. It looks pretty much housekeeping.
Exactly.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Ms. Ujibusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Bud and Mike?
Aye.
Granny Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Gregory?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, next. We have the Amendment Charter Sections 209 and 703 regarding vacancies. Ms. Kelly?
I place these on, place these on the agenda for consideration, to be placed on the next elections ballot for the electorate to decide. Usually, this isn't as obvious an issue, but we appointed somebody after the last November election. My belief is doing a very good job. But it's the people's seat, and we just had an election in March. And there may be another special election called for this year or next year before the next November election. And it's my belief that the people should have the first available opportunity to fill their representative seat. So that's, that's it.
So, Mr. Kelly, if I, if I understand this correctly, does this mean that every time somebody resigns from a position, either in the school committee or the town council, that we are obligated to schedule an election to replace them?
No, it does not.
Work.
It would, it would just coincide with the next, the next election, whether special or not, whether irregular or regular.
Specifically, a full election, not a primary election or a presidential primary election. It'd have to be town business being conducted, not our state business. Because theoretically, in 2022, we'll have a presidential primary election in, when do we do those? April?
Usually, April.
Yeah, unless we change things again in the state. My only concern is that we get to scheduling things just to have an election, and I don't wanna spend any more money in terms of an election to replace somebody. That's my main concern. I was against the, the market, the election, the voting last week wasn't an election. I guess it was a voting referendum election. Because the General Assembly should've done their job and had that on the calendar back in November.
I agree with you. But it was a chance for the people to vote on their elected representative and not to have it in an appointed position.
Yeah, that's still a tough one, too, because, I mean, if you look at the amount of people that voted in the Portsmouth election for those referendums, it wasn't a lot.
That's a valid point, and it's small special elections, usually there's a much lower turnout. So if our goal is to sort of guarantee that the maximum number of electors in the town weigh in, I'm not sure this accomplishes that.
Thousands more than seven. Thousands more than four.
True, but the, the charter was reviewed just last year, and this wasn't brought forth. I, I.
Neither was your one that's going on the next agenda, that next ballot.
I, I appreciate your, the spirit of this in terms of allowing the, the folks to do it. But I don't know if it's gonna necessarily accomplish what you do. I think you'd have more of a special interest election rather than the citizen's Portsmouth election, if that makes sense.
I'm also concerned about timing. If someone resigns right before a special election, will they have time to put their names in and get the signature collection they need or whatnot? And it does say shall be filled. How does that work?
Already says shall.
Because you can't just say, I wanna run, and then suddenly have your name appear on a ballot.
Even to this one, we couldn't get it on the next scheduled regular election, and it was two months prior to it. So even if some of those, even, even if, in this case, we appointed Ms. Kelly in November. So you're saying that she would've had to been up for a vote come March 2nd? And if she was replaced, now the school committee's gotta work on retraining a new person. I, I, like I said, I, I appreciate what you're trying to do, Mr. Kelly, but I don't think this necessarily fixes the issue or makes it better.
All right, let me, there's no more comments from councillors. Let me just, I think Mr. Fitzmaurice was first. Mr. Fitzmaurice? Mr. Fitzmaurice, you need to unmute?
I did unmute it, but then it came back. Sorry, can you hear me now?
We got you.
Okay, Larry Fitzmaurice, 50 Kristen Court. Down through the years, the council has appointed a good number of vacancies. I don't remember how many, but gotta be at least five or six on the school committee. And if memory serves, one on the council. And it's getting to be a bit of a problem in my judgment. I think there was time to place the vacancy on the November election. We just didn't ask anybody. We didn't ask the Secretary of State. We should have, in my judgment, because there was still time because the ballot wasn't set, because the primary hadn't been held. So in any case, I think the council should minimize the number of appointments. Because after all, while the charter provides for emergencies, and it should, the people are the ones that are supposed to be filling these seats, not the council. So they should look for every opportunity to avoid that. I think Mr. Kelly's proposal to change the charter at least moves in that direction. Certainly, in my judgment, accomplishes that. So I would recommend the council consider this. I also will point out the councils in past have out of season with the Charter Review Committee, made changes for the charter and put them on the ballot in the past. So this certainly is in keeping with the laws, I understand it, and certainly practiced in the past. So I would, I would recommend again that the council consider this. Thank you.
This is Nancy Greve. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
One tenth Thayer Drive. I was on the Charter Review Committee, and we did review this and brought it to the council. With the Charter Review Committee recommended that the next highest vote getter in the last election and therefore would be, would be then appointed, not appointed, but elected. And this would give you a full election, a, the people would've spoken. The town council voted no on this. So this has been discussed by, by the Charter Review Committee, and we brought forth, and I believe on at least one of the, whether it was the school committee or the town council, it was a unanimous decision by the Charter Review Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Okay. No, my laptop is small.
Krista Kelly's was on. It might've been echoing that way.
No, I'm not joined with the audio.
All right, it's gone.
To Mrs. Greve's point, I think that makes the most sense, but that was voted down by the previous council to just go to the next highest vote getter. Like I said, I don't think this fixes the, the, the problem per se.
More democratic, big D, no, small D, democratic.
It, it's definitely more small D democratic to pick, that, well, to A, reward the person who put in the time and effort to go through a full election rather than just picking anybody out of the, out of a hat, so to speak.
But you, you personally have consistently voted the opposite of the way you're telling everybody we should have the charter changed. You picked three people out of that and pointed them to the school committee.
So no other options.
The next highest vote applied in every instance.
My, my vote prior to Mr., from Juan Carlos and Ms. McDavid would've been the gentleman who ran.
And Terry Corbren instead of Cynthia Pirani and Martin Levesque instead of Mike, Mr. Daley. But that's not the debate we're having here, so.
Let's get back to the, to the item, which is, do we put forward this charter change that is being presented by Mr. Kelly?
So I'll make a motion that we include these charter changes on the next general election ballot.
I'll second.
Just a question. So this would be any election that this would apply to? So for instance, if the water board had an election, the candidate, candidates to replace vacancies would appear on that ballot as well?
That's.
Separate election. That's not a town election, right?
Town election, that's.
Okay, all right, so that doesn't apply there. Okay, just making sure.
Yeah, this one is specifically for the council, and the other one is specifically for Sluterman. This is 209 and 703.
Right, but as far as which election the replacement choices would appear, it would have to be a town election, not an election for the water district.
Correct. Elections run by our canvassing department.
Right, okay. That isn't specifically stated in the two things that I'm looking at here. It just says next election.
I mean, next election, like the Parent Teacher Association at the school has elections, too. It doesn't count as a town election. So I don't know, I think the water board, I mean, it's not a part of the town government.
Just wanted to clarify. I mean, I have no objection to these amendments.
So we have a motion and a second?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Nay.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Aye.
Hamilton?
Nay.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Nay.
Gregory.
Nay. So the motion is denied for four to three. So that's for 209.
I think.
All right, so, okay. So, all right. Let's move on to new business number seven. It's the Automated School Zone Speed Enforcement System at Melville School. Ms. Kelly?
Well, my initial agenda item said to begin the process, but I'll make that motion that we begin the process of to install an automated school zone speed enforcement system at Melville Elementary School pursuant to RIGO 31-41.33. Do that next. I mean, the reason I put this on here is because we've had, you know, the speeding through Melville school zone is abysmal on a, on a good day. And though our police are constantly out there doing traffic enforcement, they can only pull one person at a time.
So I, to begin this process, I, I don't, I don't know what the actual process is. I believe we need letters of support from our chief of police. Chief Peters?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, my, my understanding of it was is you'd have to get a letter of support, and then it would have to go according to the law. The state police and the director of DOT would have to approve this measure.
So if, if, if we vote to approve this tonight, those requests would go, that would, that would get the process started. We'd have to go to the state police and then to write up or their, their approval because it is a safer.
Correct. There'd be other things we'd have to research first. We'd have to get in touch with a, a vendor, that we'd have to have that vendor come in and say how the system would work, if it would be applicable in Portsmouth. If one of the issues would be is it's two travel lanes in each direction. So a vendor would have to have a system in place that could capture both lanes of travel in both directions. So there'd be some issues that would have to be worked out.
All right. Hey, I, I see some hands up in the attendees. Hey, at this point, any questions from councillors?
Thank you, Mr. President. That's Larry Fitzmaurice again. I'll make this pretty brief. I spoke in opposition to the use of video cameras for surveillance of speeders in the past, and those issues still apply here. I'd also like to have some idea about how much this is going to cost before the council votes on it. If we're talking about tunneling under West Main Road with conduit and stuff to make these systems work, it's not gonna be cheap. Or maybe slit the road, which, based on our patching abilities at the State Department of Transportation, I'd like to avoid. But in any case, the main objection I have remains conducting surveillance, and this is gonna be facial recognition surveillance, and using the state's databases to search for criminals is not appropriate for this. I know that there's some matters that are tried or solutions have been tried here already. But I'd like to have some assurances that everything has been tried before we go down this road. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay.
President? May I ask a question of the chief? Chief, what would it cost for us to be able to put something into budget to get you to be able to have a couple of extra speeding patrols in these general areas? I know Melville's bad. I know around the high school area is bad when the, when the kids are going there in the morning. Union Street can be bad with people, probably mostly parents racing to get their kids to school on time. But what would it cost the town? You know, is it $20,000, $30,000 to put into your budget for extra occasional speed monitoring with our own police officers?
I would say it'd definitely be in that figure, 20 to 30,000. We do get funding from the state DOT. Which we do utilize for that right now, but it would be additional funding, I would say, in that. General ballpark, $30,000 to have additional officers. We currently have officers that we assign since the beginning of September 2019. We have officers that go there at the end of every day, any every school day to assist the buses getting out of there. So we've been doing that since September of 2019. And we also have officers that are dedicated there in the morning that go there when they're able to to be for the coming and going, but. Maybe that times during the day that unfortunately we don't have somebody dedicated that we'd have to have that increased funding then.
And if we were to place extra funding in your budget, would any of that be able to go to match?
Mr. Hamilton, can you mute the end of that?
I said, if we had. Maybe maybe if you mute yourself. All right, let's try that again. If we were to provide. Again, I give up.
Give it to me, Mr. Hamilton. Do you want to try again?
I will, I guess. My question would be if we were to provide that type of 20 or $30,000 in the budget, would that? Open up more avenues to get funding as in terms of matching for state DOT funding? Or is that just a typical grant process with no match?
Correct, that's just a typical application process that we apply every year for the funds does not require any match from the town.
I am somewhat in agreement with Mr. Fitzmorris. I don't like. Faceless people or machines giving out tickets. As I mentioned on the last one week, there's a. There's a unit that Pawtucket has had in place, and I don't think our police force would do this, but they've had their system in place and they haven't been in school all year. And yet they're still giving out tickets. I do know that there is definitely an issue at Melville. I've driven through there many a times and people go flying past you. You know? So it's definitely an issue and I would like to see it corrected, but I'd rather see it done with our own officers handing out live tickets to people. And when somebody goes flying by because they see that a police officer has already got somebody stopped, so they figure they're clean and free and clear. There's another police officer waiting on the other side. I'd rather see him get a ticket that way. Than just by a. R2D2 sitting on the side of the road, which as Chief Peters has mentioned, might be a tough setup because of the four lanes.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Do you have any further comments from council?
Chief Peters, are you in favor of this?
I am in favor of it. I reiterate what I said a couple of council meetings ago that I'm in support of. Any measures that would make our roadway safer. From what I've seen from the studies and the different applications across the country. I have seen that. Traffic does go down and the the speed limits, I should say, decrease in in those zones. And under our current system, our officers try, you know, I think we do a a great job. I think our our traffic numbers. Are very high compared to the rest of the state as far as our officers stopping vehicles. But unfortunately, we can't be everywhere at once and when we get called to other things in town, unfortunately, it leaves a a gap in this area as well as other areas in town. Doing traffic violations, so yes, I I do support this measure as a matter of safety.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any any further questions from from council comments?
Just just one, this is the request here is to begin the study to see what the cost is going to be and how it would be worked before we actually install anything and we come back to the council.
Yes, yes.
Good.
I would like to just add. As a follow-up to Chief Peters, I did support the the previous motion that that when we were looking at the, you know, speed cameras. This one here, I think it's a little bit different than the prior. Proposal. I mean, this one here is very specific to Melville. We know that that's a school zone. If if anything, I would think we would, you know, if we could at least do something to enhance that area. Even if even if we're telling people, hey, we're telling you, there's a camera out there and you're going to blow through it, then you, you know, you deserve to get the ticket. And I do know our 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 guys do an excellent job, but as Chief stated, they can't be everywhere all the time. You know, for this situation, it's a school zone. It's our, you know, those are our assets right there and I would I would at least support. The effort to to identify what the cost could be here and see what the. It may prove to be not feasible, maybe it's not the right setup. I don't know, but I think we should at least. Have that investigation done. A cost so that we know what we would be getting into. I do agree that, you know, cost can be a factor here, but. Curious to at least know what that cost could be. Forward, so I do support. So we have a. We have a motion?
Yeah.
I move. We have a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Uzah?
Aye.
Aye.
Matt Meyer?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes six to one. We have. Okay. Let's try.
Hi, Michael.
Hello? Is it coming back? Twenty twenty-one eight. Five one fourteen inaccurate. Andrew alcohol.
I move the red. Two thousand.
Questions from council?
Oh, I'll second it with the. Knowledge of walking walkers for a lot of these lines.
Hold on a second. We're having some technical difficulties here tonight.
Try again, please, please.
I will second it. Based on the number of days I walk over every day.
So we had a. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abbott?
Aye.
Matt Meyer?
Aye.
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 Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Daniel?
Aye. Fast. Okay.
I need to call.
I think good. Let's try this. Are we, can you hear us now?
That seems fine, much better.
Andrew fixed it.
Like so I can move my next sentence today.
All right.
Andrew, you are now officially AV boy. Wouldn't go that far. He might have broken it to begin with.
It's very, very, okay, let's move on to number nine, resolution of the Portsmouth Downtown Council passing an act on climate bills in Rhode Island General Assembly.
Resolution is submitted.
Seconded.
Mr. President, I just have a question. This is to approve the Act on Climate Change Bill. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Oh, wait, it is in the whereas clause. Sorry, missed that. Thank you.
Hey, all those in favor?
Ms. Uzah?
Aye.
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 Matt Meyer?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Hey, there's no cost associated with it, so I don't know what it's going to cost the the town and the state to implement all of these in the next. Fifteen years.
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Daniel?
Aye. Fast six to one. Now we need to go back. Business number two. That's our place. The presentation of a fiscal year twenty audit.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Hold on, we're just going to kick up the volume.
Try again, Derek.
I can hear you.
We're going to just turn up the volume a little bit more in in circles. And I apologize, we're having some issues tonight that we haven't had in a long time.
Yeah, it's the for the last, you know, half hour or so since I've been listening, it's fading in and out, so I don't know whether you'll hear me well or not, but.
Loud and clear.
Okay. Just let me know when you want me to stop.
Peter? Are you getting the audio? I got it. Okay, okay, yeah, okay, we're ready.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you for accommodating us this evening. One of your other towns on the island were interested in doing their presentation this evening as well, so I was trying to flip between. The town of Tiverton and and the town of Portsmouth tonight, so thank you for taking me out of order. I appreciate that. So you have in front of you, I'm assuming, your financial statements for the year ended June thirty two thousand twenty, as well as your uniform guidance report, which in prior years was actually referred to as your single audit. That's the portion of the audit where we audit the federal programs. Who has control of my screen, me or you?
Do you have a special slide you'd like to be on?
So on the next screen. Is that good? Okay. On the next screen, I just kind of summarized what I just said. We you'll have two reports that you receive on an annual basis from us, your annual financial statements, which includes our audit results and our audit opinion. You'll have a separate document, which is your single audit report. And then I will just go over briefly with you any new accounting standards that may affect the town going forward into next fiscal year, and quite frankly, there's only a couple right now, one of which was delayed as it as a result of the pandemic. On the two reports that we have that we issue for you on an annual basis is our independent audit report, and you'll find that on page twelve of the larger of the two documents and the financial statements. And here, this is where we opine. On the financial statements and we indicate whether or not the statements themselves present fairly and all material material respects the financial position of the town. In addition, we include a paragraph where we apply at least to the extent of limited procedures as they're referred to and report on the required supplemental information, and that begins on page one hundred and twelve of the document in front of you. The supplemental or the required supplemental information is required by the GFOA and it includes primarily budgetary information on governmental funds. So in your case, it would be your your general fund. And it also includes information on your pension plan, your multiple pension plans, as well as your other post-employment benefit plan, which is referred to as your OPEC plan. On page one eighty, we report on the town's internal controls and compliance with laws and regulations. And actually, this report itself is repeated just for presentation purposes in the uniform guidance report as well. And in both these reports, the town received an unmodified report and received no findings. In an unmodified report, in the old days, when you would hear the reference, you would hear a reference to a clean report. That clean report is the same as what's now referred to as an unmodified report. The financial statements are broken down into a number of sections. The statements haven't changed over the last number of years, so the next section of your financial statements will include your management discussion and analysis. Followed by what's referred to as the government-wide financial statements, and we'll talk about those in a bit, as well as your governmental funds, your proprietary funds, fiduciary funds. And then the notes to your financial statements. This section that we'll talk about next is the section where the town actually has the ability to offer the readers of the financial statements in narrative form. More information with regard to the financial statements. This section. This section has been included in your financial statements for a number of years. And it has been very repetitive. So you'll see the management discussion and analysis where we speak about some highlights in the government-wide financial statements. We then follow that by some notes on the governmental financial statements. You will see condensed versions of the statements themselves, some graphs and charts, some information on your capital assets, your debt. And then finally, information on your economic factors that may affect the following years' financial statements themselves. This area of the financial statements, the management discussion and analysis, there's been a lot of discussion at the GFOA with regard to changing this format and really having it more of a format that will require management to do more writing in this section of the statements because they become, it has become very standard among all of the communities, quite frankly, throughout the United States. So if you pick up your financial statements or another municipality's financial statements, you will see they're all very similar. Due to COVID and the pandemic, there really hasn't been any recent discussion on that. So I don't believe it's going to be effective for this fiscal year, meaning fiscal year June 30, 2021. But it may be effective in future years going forward. So you may see some changes in this particular section. Here, what we try to do is we try to bullet some of the points. So your government-wide financial statements here, your liabilities and your deferred inflows of resources exceeded your assets and your deferred outflows by $55 million. That's primarily because of those liabilities. We just spoke about your pension liabilities and your OPEB liabilities. Generally speaking, in most communities with your government-wide financial statements, you'll always see your liabilities always exceeding your assets. The net position of the town this year decreased by $3.4 million. $3.3 million were in the governmental funds and $78,000 was in your business-type activities. Your governmental activity revenue increased over the prior year by $1 million. And the expenses from governmental activities increased by 4.6. So this 4.6 again is the change in your pension liability for the most part. Your business-type activities, your revenue decreased $263,000. And your expenses decreased from the prior year by 59. And some of this, not so much necessarily in the government-wide financial statements because these are primarily prepared on the accrual basis of accounting. But when we talk about your governmental financial statements, so much happened in the past year due to the pandemic that there's a lot of areas that are really not even comparable from one year to the next. When you start looking at revenue comparisons and expense comparisons, you'll see that this is going to be a unique year that probably won't be considered in some of the historical data when you start looking at historical data. Your general fund, governmental funds, your general fund is your main account, right? Your main major fund. And that's right now is reporting a fund balance of $698,000 or 8.4% for the fiscal year ended 2020. That is not necessarily a bad percentage in the sense of 8.4%. It's a little bit lower than the GFOA would recommend that you would have in your unreserved fund balance accounts. The town of Portsmouth general fund for the fiscal year ended 2021 amounted to $66,607 million, which is an increase of 2.67% over fiscal year 2020's budget. Tax rate is 16.4 per thousand versus 15.97 per thousand in the year ended 2019. On page 26, that's the page we're talking about here. This is where the town really has the opportunity to talk about economic factors and next year's budget. And so this is where you really have the opportunity to speak of it. You'll find that in most cases, in most communities this year, they do spend a paragraph or two talking about COVID-19 and the pandemic. And certainly, the governor declaring the state of emergency. So in some instances, communities will talk about areas where they didn't fill positions or they had some freezes on expenditures because in a lot of instances, the impact was lost revenue. On a completely different note, and aside from this, I know Portsmouth is not necessarily an entitlement community, but if you're following at all what's coming out of Washington, there's a good possibility that even as a non-entitlement community, you will be receiving some significant amount of money going forward with regard to the American Relief Plan Act, I believe is what they're calling it. Going forward, your financial statements, the town is, does a great job in preparing their financial statements. They are recipient of the GFOA Financial Statement Excellence and Financial Statements. And so your financial statements are set up a little bit differently than you will see some of the others in the sense that you have an introductory section. This is where the town has the ability to write its own transmittal letter, an organizational chart, and some additional data. The financial section, which is the section that we opine on, that's the government-wide financial statements that I just spoke about. The governmental funds, your enterprise funds, your fiduciary funds, followed by your notes to your financial statement. Those required supplementary that we give a limited procedure report on, as well as your supplementary information. And in Rhode Island, required to be presented in addition to the supplementary is your collector's report, as well as your MTP2 report. And then lastly, because it's a CAFRA, you have a statistical section that the town does put together and we review. The governmental, the government-wide financial statements again are prepared on the accrual basis of accounting. So what this means is that the town's assets and liabilities are presented. So here you will have your capital assets being presented along with the related accumulated depreciation, as well as any related debt to those assets. And you have your pension and your OPEB liability. The difference is if you were to look on page, I think it's 32 of your financial statements, you'll see where the differences are included. And you can actually see from the governmental financial statements that you're aware of and that you deal with on a monthly basis when you're getting your monthly reports and you're doing your budgets, what that difference is to the government-wide financial statements. And that is also true for the changes in financial position that are reflected. And the differences there are presented on page 34. So what makes it easy for the reader is to be able to say, okay, these are the areas of capital outlay and the areas of long-term debt, as well as I indicated your pension, that are your differences. The proprietary funds or the enterprise funds that are included, I believe on pages 35 to 39, though, the format of those funds are exactly the same in your proprietary funds, as well as in your government-wide. So you will see no differences there. Other differences between the types of statements that are included in the document is your fiduciary funds. Because they are fiduciary funds, right? You're holding assets on behalf of someone else, so to speak. Your pension, so that would be your employees. OPEB would be your retirees. And then, of course, any agency funds. Those financial statements, although presented in this document as a governmental fund, are not included in your government-wide financial statements when they're aggregated. Your governmental funds are the next section of your document itself. This is the section where your general fund, your special revenue fund, and your capital project funds are presented. Your general fund is presented as a major fund. And it's presented in the same manner as your budget and actual is presented on pages 113 and 114. And in the town of Portsmouth's case for the fiscal year ended 2020, your surplus was $698,000 this past year. Your school unrestricted fund is generally also always considered a major fund. And here, there is a difference between the budget and actual presented on page 115. Your GAAP financial statements have a surplus of 270, where your budgetary basis shows a surplus of $734,000. That difference is an unbudgeted transfer out that you'll see described on page 117 of the document itself. Other major funds include the town's capital project fund and the special warrant fund, 12 to 13. I know for myself, I've spoken to you about that particular special warrant fund. That's been around for a little bit. That fund includes a fund deficit of $1,792, which is carried over from prior years. And I think we talked about it at some point where an analysis of this fund was going to be put together and try to figure out why this fund is still out there. I know, Lynda, you're smiling because we've talked about this in prior years and it's still there. But one of these days, we will get it cleaned up, I promise. And then the remaining special revenue, capital project, and permanent funds are all considered non-major funds. But the individual funds are presented in supplementary information, which is not necessarily required, but it's good information for both yourselves to know as counselors, but certainly as the readers of the financial. And they all start on page 136 of the document. The enterprise funds for the town include six funds. You've got your school cafeteria fund, your transfer station, the wind turbine fund, the summer school fund, the septic system loan program, as well as that Glend Farm Fund. Those all are shown on pages 35 through 39. These funds had a total operating revenue in the past year of 1.3 million and operating expenses of 1.4 million. Non-operating transfers, a small amount of $10,000. And then, a non-operating expenses rather, of $10,000. And then transfers of $53,000 for a total change in net position of $78,176,000. In this particular case, the most significant fund contributing to the shortfall was the transfer station for fiscal year 2020 with a deficit of $131,000 this year. My fiduciary funds follow in the document. These funds include both your pension and your other post-employment benefit trust funds. The details of these funds are on page 108 of the document. Pension net position has a $55 million or $55.7 million net position or fund balance. And your OPEB has a net position of $1.6 million. Other funds included in this section are your agency funds. Your notes to your financial statements follow in order. In addition to your note one, which is your summary of significant accounting policies, it includes the details of those policies. But notes two and those thereafter are really more detail of those items that are included on your statement of net position. So you'll see various balance sheet items described. You will see a note on the details of your cash balances, on your transfers, on your capital assets, on your debt. In addition, you will have notes on risk management, on commitments and contingencies. And in this fiscal year, you will also have a note on the state of emergency as it relates to the pandemic. So a requirement that came down from the GFOA that required us to include that note. And basically, the town was going to disclose what they did or didn't do as it relates to the state of emergency and any effect that it might have on the town's finances. Now, don't forget, this particular note disclosure goes for all companies, both municipals, right, governmental entities, or for-profit entities. So for a governmental entity, you're going to find the note is written very similarly to all other local and state governments. But when you're looking at the particular note in, let's say, a for-profit entity, you may find the note written significantly different because they may have had some significant losses or may have shared in the PPP money. So things may have been a bit different. So the note is a new note. It's required. It more likely than not won't be required in your fiscal 2021 financial statements. Following that is the budgetary comparison. It's presented on pages 113 and 114 of the statements. Your actual revenues earned were less than budget by $200,000, comprised primarily of a shortfall in your property taxes of $67,000. A shortfall in your state aid of $251,000 and revenue in excess of the budget for motor vehicles of $95 and school housing aid of $61. So not a significant difference considering all that happened in the last fiscal year. On the expense side, the significant differences were actually positive turnbacks, meaning you didn't spend the money that you had originally appropriated in your budget. The police department had $194,000 unspent. Fire had $147 unspent. And your public works department had an amount of $270,000. Again, very unique year. Some of this related, I'm sure, to just the fact that they weren't able to spend some of the monies within their budget. Certainly, police and fire were essential employees, as well as public works. But at the same time, among other communities, it appears that there were vacant positions that weren't able to be filled and other things with the pandemic. One of the other items, and I didn't look into the specific details here, but in other communities, what I have found that is that a lot of the CARES money was, or a lot of the expenses in some of these essential departments was actually reimbursed under the CARES money that became available. So I'm not sure exactly how yours was spent, quite frankly. But that certainly is an area where cities and towns had some flexibility this past year with some of their expenditures. Note eight, just to give you a little bit of detail. The town has basically three pension plans. The municipal plan, the ERS plan, and then the TBS, the teacher survivor benefits. And so here you'll see that the, right now, as of June 30, 2020, the teacher survivor benefit was actually overfunded. So there was an asset, so to speak. And then the MERS plan, as well as the ERS plan, both had pension liability. So your total pension liability at June 30, 2020 was $84 million. Going forward, a couple of changes. The GASP 84, that's your fiduciary activities. This was delayed because of COVID or because of the pandemic. So this is an area where your, in particularly, your fiduciary activities are going to be accounted for differently going forward. This particular GASP was delayed. It relates in a lot of ways to areas of student activity funds. But it is going to change the accounting and financial reporting and how some of these activities are reported. So some of the activities that were reported as agency funds in prior years are actually going to be reported as special revenue funds going forward. are actually going to be reported as special revenue funds going forward. But we will definitely work with the town and the town staff on the proper accounting and disclosure for these funds. And then the other GASP, which is statement number eighty seven, it is effective for periods beginning after June fifteenth two thousand twenty one, and it deals specifically to leases. In the prior lease disclosure requirements, you would separate or distinguish between those leases that are capital leases and those leases that are operating leases. This new standard is going to combine them and is not going to be the distinction going forward. And of course, like everything else in your notes, there'll be more note disclosures as it relates to your leases. Any questions on the financial statements themselves? Okay, moving on to uniform guidance report, or better known as your single audit report. Here we issue a separate document, so you have a smaller report. It's going to be your single audit report. We report on the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. And we report on on compliance with the major programs. And a major program by definition are those programs that are over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So for the town of Portsmouth, you received one point eight million dollars, one point eight six one oh forty seven of federal expenditures in the past year. And we tested as major programs, the child nutrition program, as well as the special education program. Happy to tell you that both on the financial statement side, your internal your reports themselves were unmodified and you had no material weaknesses, significant deficiencies or non-compliance. And the same is true on the program that was tested. It's unmodified, no material weaknesses and no significant differences. So basically, what we're saying here in this report is that we had no findings to report to the federal government. What's next? You know, again, another congratulations to the town on their certificate of achievement for their excellence in financial reporting. Your CAFRA report for the fiscal year on June thousand, June thirty two thousand nineteen, you were awarded. And, you know, again, great job to everyone involved. And, you know, if the town is looking for another certificate, the GFOA does provide a distinct distinction budgetary presentation, distinguished budget presentation award. So it might be something that the town might want to strive for in the future. Any questions? Well, I thank you all for having me here tonight. And again, I apologize for moving, having you move me around in the agenda, but that was great. So I was able to actually help you and and present to you this evening as well as the town of Tivon. So you you both had your presentations this evening.
Yep, I know there'll be a couple of questions. So any questions from counselors before I?
Two quick questions, Mr. President. One, I noticed going through the report, and I believe I called your office earlier today just to get clarification. We have a essentially a special reserve fund for the excess money. If there's any surplus left over for our snow removal budgets to be put into a special reserve account.
Correct.
That doesn't show up in the report, and if it does, can you direct me to where it is?
Yes, I believe it's on page one fifty nine of the report. I'm trying to get there myself on a different screen.
That's okay. I'll see if I can beat you there.
So it's not it's not entitled Snow Report, but it's entitled Department Reserve Fund for some reason. So right now it has a balance of two hundred and eight thousand dollars in it.
Perfect. Thank you. That's why I couldn't find it. Can we just rename that for next year to make my life easier?
We certainly can because I couldn't find it. I couldn't find it either.
Unfortunately, this was a little bit dicey towards the end. We may be a little bit over or maybe a little bit under. We need to utilize that. That's something that we can look at at the end of the year, correct? So if if like last year, this department becomes in at two hundred and seventy thousand dollars in the budget, we don't have to touch that. We can just shift money within their budget to cover the shortfall of overtime and snow removal. And then secondly, I'll go to our wonderful two two thousand twelve thirteen warrant item. I suggested a few years back that we utilize half of our surplus each year, which last year was nine twenty two. This current one you're in now is about six seventy eight, so we would have trimmed that one million seven hundred ninety two thousand dollars down by about seven hundred thousand dollars. We'd be about about one million dollars. I know this is a report out, and I'm going to be putting that item on the next agenda so that we can get rid of that thing once and for all, so that in the future, one half of all of our audited surpluses will be put towards that to finally pay it down and get rid of it.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Larry, you're muted.
No, I'm I'm not muted.
Larry.
Oh, sorry.
I don't want you to mute either. We might we might need you to respond.
Okay, you're looking for Larry Fitzmaurice, right?
We got you, Larry. Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to focus on the pension plan. When the Portsmouth Concerned Citizens reviewed this audit, this kind of jumped out at us and and seems to be a growing problem. So let me just summarize for those people who may not be conversant in the details. Total pension liability is a hundred and twelve million dollars. So we're talking about a lot of money. Our budget this year is sixty six point six million. So it gives you a reference. The net position liability at June thirtieth was fifty six million dollars. So that's what we owe, what we are unfunded liabilities. And the total contribution to the pension plan in two thousand twenty was four point four million. So that's general background. When we look at this, we saw pension unfunded liabilities were increasing at an accelerating rate. They're not only going down, they're going down faster. Now, this is over a three-year period, and certainly that's not statistically a trend. However, if we wait around for the trend to be statistically solid, then we may not have the opportunity to save ourselves. If this trend continues, it won't be but a year or two before we're unable to come back against this. We're concerned about it greatly. Let me, I did some research, and so let me summarize the last five years. Twenty sixteen, the unfunded liability increased at fifteen percent. In two thousand seventeen, it decreased. We had a good year, six point one percent. In two thousand eighteen, it increased again at three point eight percent. In two thousand nineteen, it increased twelve point seven six percent. And in two thousand twenty, it increased by twenty one point seven five percent. So we're looking at a statistical problem, and we're going down. And we're also at a total unfunded liabilities are forty nine and change percent. And the state's specification, unless they've changed it lately, is, I believe, still sixty percent. We're supposed to be sixty percent funded and we're forty nine percent funded. And our percentage, of course, as each one of these years pass by, dropped. So what we're concerned about is if is the town going to execute a plan? Now, we had reference in the audit of a by the statement that was made by by the town management that they are responding to a state-required plan presumably to make this better. But we would like to hear what the plan for the council and the and the administration is going to be, or if they if they're concerned at all. Now, we're concerned, but I hope they are, but we'd like to hear what the level concern is because within a fairly short period of time, we're going to find ourselves in a position where we can't keep up with this. Now, whatever explanations have been offered in the past were that to the effect that it was a temporary sort of thing, and it would be, it would write itself in the future. That's not turned out to be the case. So yes, we understand we're shifting people from one type of plan to another type of plan. We also understand that the numbers of people that are actually employed who are still under this pension plan is relatively small, but we still have a very large unfunded liability. And so I guess my question, I'll repeat. You know, what is the town's plan to reverse this rapidly increasing pension liability? And I'll listen for an answer. Thank you.
I think that's a valid concern that this is a town that's there's a number of things that are happening. I mean, one is, you know, we're squeezing the elephant through the pipeline. So when these measures were enacted, a number of people who were still employed by the town under the defined benefit, as those people are retiring, that's obviously creating a greater liability before not drawing pensions. Function with that, the pension investment firm has definitely underperformed. The investment committee will be meeting this month to discuss this, adjust the course, and take measures necessary to get a better performance out of our investments so that our payment comes down. Plan that you referred to, yes, that's with the state, and that that plan is to become funded, I believe, the year by nineteen forty, sorry, twenty three, one forty two, I don't remember off the top of my head. So to do that, obviously, the actuaries determine year by year, which are actuarially determined contribution is what that payment is required to be to stay on that plan. And the biggest driver on that is how much money is coming to the investment. So the number one thing we have to do, and we're taking action on it, is to bring the investment advisor in before the investment committee this month to assess their lack performance and take the measures necessary to correct it.
May I ask, I make a point of the fact that I understand we've changed the actuarial tables we're using to evaluate, you know, the demand on the fund going forward. Is that correct?
I'm not sure what I meant by what you meant by that. We're not changing the tables, but the actuarially determined contribution change is based on the performance of the fund investments. So while the end game is still the same, the numbers to get there will change based on how much money the
Let me try and make it a little bit more clear. Sorry for the vagueness. I was referring to actuarial tables that were used to predict the demand on the fund of retirees to be indelicate whether they're going to survive X number of years or or not and how sick they're going to be on average. So I understand we switched from one type of actuarial prediction for the demand to another. Does that make any more sense?
I'll let the finance director speak, but I don't believe that's the case. It's this, the tables adjusted year by year based on, you know, there's a continuing evaluation. And this is, you can find on the GASP reports that are on the finance webpage. Those are published, I think, in June of each year, but I'll let Lisa, maybe she has a better understanding of this.
This is Lisa Lasky speaking. I think what you're referring to is the like expectancy chart, and that's determined by the actuary. We don't have any input out to the table that they choose to use as far as what is best suited for our needs. So we we are directly kind of input into that determination. Answer your question, Larry?
Yes, it does, but but it's, I think I forget where it was. I think it was page fifteen. I read in the audit that this was one of the factors that resulted in the drop in the net value of our of our fund balance, not fund balance, but assets in this fund. So.
At least it was, I think you're absolutely, I think you're correct. I mean, obviously, the investment, the investments are informed, but the actuaries did. They're constantly evaluating the workforce, and there has been an uptick in life expectancy. So you are correct in that.
Also, we checked the market indices for stocks and mutual funds, of course. And there was a drop year over year as of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. But I mentioned that only because that's the research we found. I don't think it's the answer to the problem. I'd also like to ask about controls. You mentioned you're going to meet with a specialist trying to evaluate the performance of the the pension fund itself, and I certainly think that's a good idea. But we have or have had in the past a very well-staffed pension committee. Have they met on this issue?
That's the committee that I'm talking about. They'll be meeting.
Okay. Okay, sorry, I don't get every word, so I must have missed one of the ones in the middle.
I probably didn't use the right, yes, that that is maybe they're they're meeting on the
Have this, has the committee met in the past year?
Not to my knowledge, no. I believe it's probably been two years since they met.
Okay, well, I would suggest respectfully that we need to use their talents because those are the really smart people, and they know what's probably wrong with this thing. And the town council should ensure that they meet within a specified periodicity so that we have a good control over this with our experts.
I disagree with you. We're taking the measures and correct that.
All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Rayner. Thank you, Mr. President.
I just, I just wanted to make an observation. I thank Mr. Fitzmaurice for his comments and for so eloquently making the case as to why the country needs a Medicare-for-all program, which would completely eliminate OPEB costs. If you're interested, the PCC could actually volunteer to testify for some of the state's single payer bills that are about to be heard in the State House over the coming month. You can look at the state roster of bills and the days they're being heard. And you can add your voices to those of us who are all for reducing municipal debt and responsible spending. Thank you very much.
Let me just say, let's just, let me say to Dr. Ryan that we're trying to eat the elephant, not all at once, but leg per leg.
Best to eat it before it tramples you.
Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'd like to start on page thirteen of the report. I'm sorry, page thirty three of the report. And there, the twelve thirteen warrant has been reclassified as a major fund with a negative balance. Unlike last year's restatement of the general fund, this one was properly documented with report notes. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for those. However, what was not documented is why this fund is now being reclassified as a major fund after many years of being combined in the non-major funds. Would you please explain why this change was made and what accounting principle or Gatsby statement is being followed?
Well, the major funds can can either fit by definition as to whether they qualify as a major fund or not, or it can be management's decision to call out, if you will, a fund and show it as major so it is not necessarily combined combined in all of the funds. In this particular instance, I believe it was management's decision to call this fund a major fund in the current year. The two attributes that you would look at is revenue and assets or liabilities to determine if they are a major fund. I would venture to guess, and I and I don't have the work paper in front of me, is that management made a decision to report this particular fund as major this year.
That's actually not the case.
Okay.
If you go to note 17, it says that it was reclassified according to Gatsby 34. However, there's no elaboration as to why.
I'm sorry, sir. I would have to get back to you on that. My, again, the Gatsby is specific to as to whether it is revenue or expense driven or asset or balance sheet driven. So the $1.7 million must have caused it to be major by mathematical calculation, but I will be glad to get back to you on that disclosure.
I I believe you are absolutely correct because I did those calculations myself.
Okay.
Then, if you go down to the bottom of page 33, you can see that the amount of this fund did not change last year. And since the Gatsby numbers are in the 90s right now, Gatsby 34 is not a new statement. My question is, shouldn't this fund have been classified as a major fund last year?
Again, without going back to the prior year work papers and the prior year funds, I can't answer that here tonight, but I can certainly get that information for you.
Okay, how will you do that?
I would report to, I would get the work papers from the prior year and have a conversation with your town administrator.
Okay, and the town administrator will tell me?
I would assume so.
Okay, that that's fine. The council had a meeting on, and this is with apologies to Mr. Hamilton. The council had a meeting on May 11th, 2020, which is six weeks prior to the end of the fiscal year being reported. By a 7-0 vote, the council approved New Business Number Four, which instructed that 50% of any surplus pay down the 1213 warrant. Mr. Hamilton made the motion. It was seconded by Mr. Katzman. You can look at it in the minutes. Why was this not done? I'm sorry, I can't hear.
I don't know, Mr. Tom. Who are you asking the question of?
Of you. You're the auditor.
Well, yes, I am the auditor, but in this particular case, I am not even sure what the surplus would have been, but it may not have even have been material to the financial statements taken as a whole.
You misunderstood what I said. If there was a surplus in 20, in the 2020 budget, 50% of that surplus was to pay down the 1213 warrant. The instructions by the council were clear. And I think the auditors have a responsibility to search out and report such financial infractions when they're not done.
But if the, and and I'm just trying to understand you this evening, but if the vote was for the 2020 surplus, it would not get affected until the 21-year because you've got to close the 2020 year to determine what the surplus is before you can make the transfer to the reduction of the 1213 warrant. So that transaction would occur in the 21 fiscal year.
But then wouldn't it be reported in the subsequent event note?
Not if it wasn't material to the financial statements taken.
It's $350,000. That's material to the to the the fund balance, the general fund balance. That's this, we're not talking $10,000 here.
It could, it could have been included in the notes if if the town felt it necessary to disclose. These are the town's financial statements, sir.
But it was audited by Hagan, Shahidi, right? Was it not?
I agree, and we opined on the material, whether or not the financial statements were materially correct, and they are. That would be a note to the financial statements at a minimum, and that would be all. It would not be affected in these financial statements.
I, I, well, I mean.
Affected in the 21 financial statements.
I'm, I don't see, I don't think that was the intent of the motion, nor do I see how, you know, when the amount is, I'm not going to argue with you. Again, this year, I want to bring up the inconsistencies in nomenclature. Again, this is something Mr. Hamilton found as well, being used in the town report. For example, on page 33 of the fund we have just been speaking about, it is called Special Fund Warrant 1213. On page 74, the same major fund is called Special Revenue 1213. Similarly, on page 33, there is a major fund called Town Capital Projects Fund. On page 45, it confirms that the Town Capital Projects Fund is a major fund. This certainly implies there is only one such fund. But you go to page 74 or 38, and you will find there is a second different fund, also called Town Capital Projects Fund. I've just provided an example of the same fund being called by two different names, and I've also provided an example of two different funds being called by the same name. There are other examples, but I think these are egregious enough to make the point. Such inconsistencies are tailor-made to confuse or mislead the average reader who does not have the financial background to decipher this report. If transparency and easy readability are objectives of this report as stated in the introductory section, I think it clearly fails. I'd like the council to look at page 196. Can any of you explain how the numbers on this page are correct? According to the column heading, they should add up to something less than 100. Clearly, they add up to way more than that. Now, take a look at page 175. Can any of you tell me which funds the financial activities described on this page are referring to? I'm confident you can't because there are no column headings. It doesn't take more than five seconds looking at either of these pages to find out something is obviously wrong. How could this be published in the town's archived financial report and sent to the state? One of the major reasons the residents elect the council is to oversee the budget and reporting process. If it is too much for the council to look at each page, I suggest you create a resident budget audit committee to advise you. This is a solution embraced by many organizations when their boards or councils are not knowledgeable enough in the financial matters or do not have the necessary time to devote to the financial matters. Any anybody refute what I just said?
I'll refute one part.
Okay.
So my motion was that we would use 50% of any audited surplus. So since we're just receiving technically, having the audit report now, as Mary stated, 50% of the 687,000, I'm sorry, I'm going to mess that number up, or 680,000, half of that should go to pay down at 1.7. That would be handled by the finance department, and then would be reported, as Mary stated in next year's audit, that that was moved there. And then come next January, February, when we go through this again, if we have a surplus, 50% of that would go to pay it down. But since I didn't make the motion until, well, I didn't get it. I made the motion in the past, but I didn't have an agreeable counsel until last May. So the only part that would be put in would be that 600, half of the 680,000.
That that is absolutely correct. I, you and I are in agreement.
Okay. But she, but she wouldn't, but but she wouldn't show that in this audit report. It would be shown in the following audit report.
I, I, I disagree with that because I think that is a known significant event that should have been at least noted, that this was coming out of the of the general fund to pay that down. If if you were going to do it that way.
It's not coming out of the general fund. It's not going into the general fund.
All right, all right. Well, no, 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 let me, let me, let me refute that because if if it's going the way you said and and this Shahidi said, it goes into the general fund and then it's got to come out. That's why I I would clearly say that the motion made it clear it was the surplus that was paying it off. It didn't go into the general fund and then come out. I'm not going to argue that with you tonight, but I think it could well be argued. And I, the big thing is, I believe the auditors had no idea that this was there. We have six counselors who were in the same meeting. I give Mr. Mr. Buttermeyer a pass on this because he wasn't there, and Mr. Rayner, who sat there, and nobody even questioned it. All right, let let me just, I got one final paragraph here for you. Finally, there was a $700,000 surplus in fiscal year 20. Normally, I would say great work, but this comes on the heels of a well over $900,000 surplus in the previous year. These surpluses represent a substantial portion of the tax increases in both of those years. Such large back-to-back surpluses with no report of unusual windfalls which produced them indicates residents are being overtaxed. That becomes especially evident when the budgeted tax levy increased during this timeframe and has gone to the maximum legal limit and is more than double the inflation rate. I sincerely hope as we start the next budget cycle that this will be taken into account by the council when they review the next budget. A realistic inflation-based maximum tax levy needs to be set as a budget restriction instead of relying on the maximum the law allows to constrain it. Portsmouth residents do not need to be overtaxed only to see their hard-earned money sit in the town's bank account. This is especially important under the present economic circumstances. Please consider that. I've got, if anybody has questions or if anybody wants to see the the page numbers or numbers that I quoted tonight, I would be happy to just, you all have my email. I would be happy to 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 hear from any of you, and I'll answer any questions you have.
I disagree, but I think we will look into some of your comments. So you can email them to Rayner.
I, I, I will do so. It's interesting that the the GFOA doesn't find these things, but.
I, I do have a general comment or really question for Mary. Surpluses that we're, this might just be a general question. The surplus that we saw on the downside and side, I mean, last March, we shut down, March and April. I think a lot of our typical expenses that, you know, this is probably money that would have been spent but was not spent. I know we had some discussions with the school, they give up some of their busing contracts and things like that. You know, everything shut down, so money was not being spent. It probably would have been spent. Do you see that in other cities, Mary?
Yeah, so we have, we have a lot of instances of of that where because things were shut down, there were a lot of areas that weren't spent. Not so much necessarily in Portsmouth because you're not a self-insured fund, but a lot of communities that have self-insured health insurance have seen significant what one would think to be savings in their health insurance but for not knowing going forward with the pandemic and then, you know, people getting vaccinated and then going back in for elective surgery, what that's going to do for health insurance. On your instance, you had savings in in some of your larger public safety areas, although they were considered essential employees and certainly at work. There are just just areas across the board where, you know, I've had communities that weren't able to hire police, for an example. They couldn't even have an academy because with COVID, they couldn't put them in an academy. So you can't have remote academies for police and fire. So they had those kinds of challenges as well. So positions went unfilled, even though the intention of the town was to fill the positions. In other instances, and I think I might have mentioned this a little bit earlier, is that some communities were provided some CARES money, and with that CARES money or that PPE money that it was referred to was a lot of expenditures were covered. Some of it was even overtime monies that were covered by the federal government. And I'm not 100% sure about particular grant award that Portsmouth received, but there are a lot of communities that were able to use some of what they would have charged to their operating budget and charge it to the CARES so that they could provide the safety that was necessary for both the public safety employees who were required to attend work and for those employees who are not public safety but were required to come in and still conduct town business. So it was a very unique year.
I, I appreciate it. Again, to Mr. Greer's comments, he'll send them in, and we'll take a look at them. So I do thank you for the presentation tonight. I don't know if any other councils have any questions, comments? Do you need a motion to just receive it?
I think we've already received it back in January, but I'll make a motion to receive it and place it on file. It's just a presentation.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Savage?
Aye.
Mr. Buttermeyer?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mary.
Right, next we have.
Move to receive and place on file. Seconded.
All in favor?
Mrs. DePuzo?
Aye.
Savage?
Aye.
Buttermeyer?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly? Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed, seven to zero. Next, we have future meetings in March 2020. Next, we have future meetings, March 22nd as well. Is that where we're going to put to advertise? Do we need to? Do we need to advertise a public hearing? Do we need a motion from the council? For the sign, the sign ordinance? We're going to need, on April 12th, a motion to advertise our public hearing on our proposed sign ordinance.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I don't think, can I interject here?
Yeah.
It's not on the agenda. It's just like, it's an automatic thing that the planning board passed, you know, you unanimously voted to propose amendment to the town council, and under the law, it's automatic that it gets put on for a public hearing. So it, it's not really on the agenda, other than under future meetings. I think the purpose of the future meetings was just to say, is April 12th a good date for the council?
Okay. April, that's the tentative date for the.
Yeah, just for, just for scheduling purposes.
We've got, we've got busy agendas every night, so, yeah, I mean, I'm okay with.
Because the clerk's office got, you know, needs to, we got to run the ads, that's all.
Right. That's, so April 12th will be the first, so you'll run the ads, so that the public hearing is April 12th. Okay.
Right, but I think the, the question is, is that date okay for the council, you know, do we, is there too much? Just basically putting it before the council, that date, is there any issues with that date? Otherwise, you know, just move forward.
Yeah. I don't see it being an issue. We have the clock.
I don't see any.
So you, that will be, put the notice in. All right, so we have our regular meetings April 12th, and then we start the budget process April 12th, the week of the 26th, 27th, 28th, and 29th, if necessary.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All of the favor?
Hi.
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 Hamilton?
Hi.
Ellie?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Hi. Passes seven to zero. Thank you all.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you. Good night.
22nd.
Yes, sir.